By Executive Order N 29-20 issued on March 18th of 2020, NMUSD Board Meetings will be closed to the public. For Spanish interpretation, habrá interpretación al español a través del mismo enlace de Zoom. We are calling to order the special closed session meeting for 9:32 at 3:31. Roll call, please.
Trustee Flor.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey. Trustee Yelsey.
Yeah.
Trustee Black.
Yeah.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Anderson. Trustee Snow.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung, Superintendent.
Here.
I'm here as well. It wasn't letting me in. Thank you.
Perfect. Terrific. So item number four on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. So may I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please, and a second?
Move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Trustee Yelsey moved. Trustee Metoyer seconded. Roll call, please.
Trustee Flor.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Black.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Snow.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Okay. Item number five is community input on special agenda items only. Trustee Black, would you please read the following, the statement?
Sure. Hold on. Um, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda only. Each speaker has three minutes to read, uh, read time to, and speakers may not cede unused time to other speakers. Per Board Policy 9323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. All comments submitted, the following links will be read into the public webinar video record. All comments must be submitted no later than 9:00 AM on Tuesday, or whenever we did it, what was it, yesterday?
Okay, so we have received the following breakdown. We received on item 6A, threat to public services or facilities, 238 comments. And on item 6B, conference with labor negotiator NMUSD rep, we received two. For total submissions received of 240 comments. Given the number, I am requesting that we extend the comment time to 30 minutes. I asked Rosie to divide it up into and randomly sort into two, two areas. One is to, for those that were in a favor of a quick reopening, they are highlighted on your, your public comment sheet in red and comments in favor of a delayed reopening or the con in our identified in, in blue. We've done a whole bunch of them. We will stick to the, if we can stick to the 30 minutes, that would allow 15 minutes pros and cons. And we will read them just as we've done before. You have all of the comments listed. And so, and I'll have Rosie will lower, will limit it to two minutes each comment. And then Rosie will keep each minute, each comment to two minutes. And then for a total, total amount of 30 minutes.
Can I have a quick point of order, just really for the recording? The pros and cons are, just to be clear, they're not actually pros and cons, the.
That's correct. They are, they are, as I said in the beginning, the, the, it was in favor of opening, reopening now, and in favor of delaying.
But I'm sorry, but that doesn't reflect the, the comments as written. Most of them are actually, uh, the ones that are in favor of quicker opening are very simple and they're in favor of a quick reopening. But the ones that are in blue are actually requests for definitions of specific things, requests for reopening plans. So just to be totally, to be totally clear, it's not, it's not delayed reopening in, in many of them.
Okay, all right. Got it.
I just want to say that you're correct, Trustee Barto. Some of them were neutral, some of them posed questions. You know, I think the point is, is that it, it will reflect, you know, both positions as well as neutral positions. And it is randomly sorted.
And when we get to those that are asking questions, I will re, we'll return it to Superintendent Lee Sung to respond. Okay, so.
Point of order question, please.
Sure.
So I understand that they were randomly sorted and I think that that is great. As I was having problems logging on, are we doing a time limit or are we doing it by the, the number of comments? Because to me, it's not necessarily very fair if people have a one sentence or two sentence comment when there's people who wrote five paragraphs, you know.
It's, it's twofold, Ashley, Trustee Anderson. It is each comment has a max of two minutes. And the total amount will be 30 minutes.
Okay, but we're not limiting it by number. Okay, thank you.
We're not limiting by number. We're just limiting it by the, the total amount, but each, each number. So if we can go, we can go to the 30 minutes. It's just the 30 minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, we will begin with comments on item 6A, threat to public services or facilities in randomized order. Trustee Anderson, you may, can you begin, please?
Yes. My comment is from Heather Burton. My daughter attends Davis Magnet and I request that the Newport Mesa Board applies for the waiver from Orange County Department of Health. My daughter is struggling in remote learning and her self-esteem is very low since she can't see her friends. Please bring the kids back to school.
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
My comment is from Fernanda Morton. Dear Board Members, I just wanted to write and say thank you for your measured approach to reopening thus far and for not rushing to reopen the minute that we are off the watch list. As a parent of two kids who just started back and who are getting settled into distance learning, I am grateful that we are not switching gears quickly again. I appreciate the focus on making sure distance learning is going well. I think the teachers and administration have done an amazing job of making distance learning more seamless and interactive. And in conversations I've had with other parents, I think both students and parents are feeling good about the reality of distance learning. I know it's not what any of us want, but kids, parents and teachers have accepted this reality and are making the best of it. I'm so grateful for the hard work being put into it. I would also ask that you keep us in our distance learn mode until we can have more time to watch if there is an uptick, to continue to gather data about kids and their role in community spread. And so that kids and teachers can really get some time in the present model before the chaos of shifting, shifting to hybrid. Especially at the secondary level, the shift is going to involve major schedule changes, moving from everyone in morning classes to splitting classes into two shifts. And it will also result in double the teaching time for many teachers. I know there will be intense pressure, but I hope we can stay where we are for a bit and let the kids and teachers have some breathing room. I know it is hard on parents, but the health and safety of our kids and community has to come first. Of course, we all want our kids to be back in school, but the most prudent thing is to allow time to make sure that A, case counts are accurately reflected as low for a significant period of time. And B, we do not experience another spike that sends kids back to distance learning. Sincerely, Fernanda Morton, Mom of Kids, CMMS and Davis.
Thank you. Trustee Black.
My community member is Sarah Roman. Please reopen the elementary schools. Both of my girls love school and it is heartbreaking watching them struggle each day. The teachers are doing their best, but Zoom is such a difficult platform to effectively teach on. We love our school and can't wait to go back. The girls understand they will have to wear a mask all day and they are ready to follow all of the new rules.
Great, thank you. I have Naya Meda Esquire. Hello, I'm wondering why we keep moving the goalposts for school reopening? Is there new information that's requiring a more stringent approach to sending our children back to school? Based on credible publishing, publishing such as the Wall Street Journal's latest article, it seems we would rather be, we were rather bullish in our complete shutdown of schools and businesses. The benefits of going, of doing so did not exceed the harm. Why, why then do we continue to make it difficult to send our kids, our children back to school? Let's reconcile our need to flatten the curve on COVID with the need to protect our children from depression. Trustee Metoyer, you have the next one.
Yes, mine is from Caitlin Lopiccolo. I wholeheartedly believe that our children need to go back to school as soon as possible. My son had an incredible TK experience last year that ignited his love for learning and started his transformation into an incredibly smart, curious young student. This year, only a week into distance learning kindergarten, I see that love for learning dwindling. He is anxious, sad, frustrated, and starts every day saying, I don't like school. This breaks my heart. I believe it is our duty as parents and educators to do whatever we can to get our students back in person, oops, in person. As we have seen across the country and even in our local schools who have taken the time and effort to apply for waivers, it can be done. Please help our youth and get a plan in place ASAP to get them back on campus.
Thank you. Trustee Yelsey.
My comment is from Cara Boyd. Please consider an AM PM model for elementary school reopening with an hour between cohorts so teachers can disinfect their classrooms and eat lunch. AM students can take a grab and go lunch and PM students can arrive early for lunch on site if they wish. The smaller number of students eating lunch makes distancing and supervision, supervision more doable. Cohorts can be decided by last name so that families with multiple students can have the same timeframe for in-person learning. This allows students to receive their core instruction in person daily and leaves off-campus hours available for independent work and specialists. Thank you for your consideration as you determine the safest and most effective way to reopen schools.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
Rod Sudbeck. Kids need in-person teaching. Back to school.
Mine is from Steve Smith. Good afternoon. On today's agenda, there is a word that is often used to describe the focus of the discussion in closed sessions. The word is threat. Agenda item 6A for today, for example, reads threat to public services or facilities, Government Code Section 54957A, consultation with Agency Council. This item is to discuss the district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm sure I'm not alone in thinking that when I see the word threat, I'm concerned about the demise of the school or program or whatever it is that is being discussed. It is frankly a disturbing term. Before you go into your closed session today, I would greatly appreciate learning the precise definition of the term threat relative to these topics. Thank you very much.
And I do have an answer. I read the statements and the comments. And I do have, I emailed our attorney Spencer E. Covert and got this response from him. So I'm going to read this. For the benefit of all, and thank you, Steve, for asking the question. When the District Board of Education meets in closed session, it is legally required to use certain terminology to describe the purpose of the closed session. One of these terms includes threats to public services or facilities. In this context, threat refers to the dangers COVID-19 poses to district students, staff and members of the community in connection with the Newport Mesa Unified School District. Sincerely, Spencer E. Covert, Attorney at Law. So I hope that helps with that one. Trustee Black, you're next.
I'm, yes, my community mayor, Barrett. My children deserve to physically be in school where they can see the faces of their teachers and friends. They, they are used to so much change that they are suffering the effects of sitting in front of a computer alone in their room at home. Even in unusual circumstances, they will, as things stand now, I worry for their mental health. If bars and restaurants can sit people with no mask and hardly any social distancing, my kids can go to school. I beg you to allow them this privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. Mine is from Grace Kaufman. Dear Board Members, I understand your job is not easy and the decision of whether or not to open schools, when, is daunting. I strongly believe that now is not the right time. This is not a race. Above all, our children and educators' lives come first. You hold in your hands the power to affect many lives. Please make the choice to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Trustee mine is from Josh Trin. The school district needs to reopen in-person instruction. Other districts are opening. Our children's mental wellbeing is at stake and Zoom courses are insufficient. Those who wish to remain home have the option of virtual school. Let our kids go back to school.
Mine is from Leslie Boss. I'm concerned the district is rushing to reopen on the first date available. We all want our kids back in school, but safety has to be our top consideration. For the immune compromised families like mine, I urge caution and not speed.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
My comment is from Michael Gartner. The district has had three months to figure out a plan for reopening that will keep both students and teachers safe. There are 70 private and religious schools that have figured it out and applied for the waiver. Why can't Newport Mesa?
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
I have from Janice, Janice Dada. I am strongly against the reopening of NMUSD schools at this time. Distance learning has just started, is organized and going well, and kids are getting used to the new routine. Please wait this out through the flu season and with the release of a vaccine for the coronavirus. There is no need to rush this and make our kids the test case for early opening. Schools that have opened across the country have had to shut down shortly after reopening and children have been infected. It is a false narrative to think that children do not get and spread this virus. Please consider the health and safety of our children, teachers, staff and the community. We are not ready to reopen schools.
Thank you.
Mine is from Monica Ambrose. The emphatic request for both my husband and I is for the district to apply for the waiver so that we Newport Mesa Unified School District can be in charge of our own plan versus being at the mercy of a governor who changes the rules along the way. Parent choice virtual option has been delivered and those that need prefer, it could select it. The remainder of us that need, want or our children to be in school should also have that option. Private schools have done it successfully. If the district is not willing to fight on the behalf of our children and families for in-class education or they can't figure out how to do it safely, we will look elsewhere for our education. Newport Mesa Unified School District, please provide an official stance on applying for the waiver and an estimated return to school date.
Thank you. I have Doreen Sprio. There is no need to rush back to school at this time. The online schooling is going well and the kids are happy, relaxed and learning. Let them finish the semester at home. Trustee Metoyer.
Whoops. Tori Call states, kindly requesting the district reevaluate its stance on applying for a waiver for in-person learning. We have not been given a good enough reason why the district hasn't done so and we need to get these kids back to school. Tells us children under 12 are less at risk of COVID than the flu. And there is no known cases of child to adult transmission. We live in this district because of the excellent schools and are being extremely let down by the district's poor leadership and communication.
Thank you.
Mine is from Jenny Dory. Hello and thank you for listening. I would like to begin by commending the EdTech team of NMUSD. Jennifer Mishney, Melissa Price, Martha Felix and James Marshall have been working countless hours for students, staff and families. My principal, Matt Rosamly, my kindergarten team and teachers around the district have been putting together amazing and innovative things to reach each and every student in our care. Thank you to the families that are partnering with schools to give our children what they need during this time. As we look to reopen schools, I think we can all agree it needs to be done in a careful, thoughtful way to maximize student and safe and staff safety. I wonder, does each school already have PPE in place? Has extra custodial staff been hired? Have thermometers, sanitizers, soap masks already been purchased and are in each classroom? In my opinion, all of these things should have already been in place. No matter what our reopening looks like, these things need to be in place. Is there a team of teachers from each level brainstorming ideas? What looks good for a high school may, may or may not be what looks good for the five-year-olds in my care. Is there a shared document where we can look at the ideas our district is considering and offer feedback? If there is, I have not seen or heard of it. I believe that we can do better. I believe we can team up to offer ideas and ultimately make plans that we can use successfully. For elementary, I think the AM PM model will work best so that we can have limited students in class at a time and we do not need to navigate getting hundreds of children in recess and lunch break. Students can eat grab and go lunches. They can receive direct instruction and feedback from their teachers in the classroom and then do asynchronous work outside of the classroom. Please work toward better communication and building greater connection between the district, the teachers and the families. We are all here for the same reason. We all want to see the best things put in place for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
Yes, my comment is from Kevin Brolet. I'm very, I'm a very concerned parent of two boys enrolled at Anderson Elementary in Newport Beach. And I'm currently on the cusp of giving up on the public school system and unenrolling my children. I ask that you immediately reopen the Newport Mesa School District and start communicating a detailed plan around timing. It has been announced that if Orange County continues trending in a positive way, our schools can open as early as September 22nd. I expect that this is the date you are working towards, if not earlier, by applying for the waiver. I don't understand why you haven't tried to apply for the waiver. Almost every school that has applied has been approved. Follow Los Alamos Unified's lead and try. You have a very detailed hybrid plan that I'm confident will keep our children and teachers safe. You've given parents the choice of opting out and attending virtual school. Now please do the work to bring our children back to school so they can have the education and school experience they so deserve. Distance learning does not work and it literally destroys the mental health and wellbeing of many children, including my own. Zoom calls are not an age-appropriate way for small children to learn. My otherwise happy children are now angry, constantly in tears before, during and after Zoom calls and in therapy for anxiety caused by this horrible distance learning experiment.
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
Mine is from Zina Tórez. NC Newport Coast Elementary is doing a great job with virtual learning. Kids have their days planned, interacting in breakout rooms and are in a routine. We are now upon flu season. Why would we go back to school, most likely to have to shut down again to do to flu COVID-19 cases and throw the kids into another routine? Let's keep them distance learning until the end of the year and resume in-person after winter break. The yo-yo could be horrible for the kids and their emotional state. At least now they are in a routine and staying healthy. Come up with a plan that's suitable for, for after winter break. Look at the colleges. Look at the rampant spread. What's the hurry? If my kid has a cough from allergies, how will they be taught? They can't go to school and will miss learning because virtual won't be an option if in-person learning resumes. Every kid will have a cold or symptoms during the season. Let's resume after flu season passes and we have better understanding of COVID numbers and kids spreading the virus. Protect your teachers and staff and do what's right for the health of the community.
Thank you.
My community member is Carrie Atkinson. I want my sixth grader returning to school at California School.
Great, thank you. I have Rick Lamas. How is the board addressing Anderson Elementary School? Classrooms have no windows or doors. The AC units are old and ventilation is poor. No hand washing units. Community drinking fountains need to be removed. One bathroom for the staff? What is, what about the plexiglass desk shields for teachers and students? One custodian for disinfecting everything and a janitor closet for quarantine kids? How is this safe?
My comment is from Nicole Smith. She opened.
My comment is from John Raisleton. As both the Newport Mesa Unified School District educator since 1995 and an NMUSD parent, I am vehemently opposed to the district's proposal, proposed hybrid model. There are many reasons, but I will provide two. First, pedagogy, how we teach. Summary, in-person instruction in a hybrid model will not be close to normal in-person instruction and will create problems that are avoided in distance learning. Kids and teachers will be masked and distanced. This effectively rules out collaboration within the classroom, group work projects, manipulatives. What instructional tools can be effectively employed in that setting? I would argue most teachers will use that time for direct instruction, demonstrations, class discussions, going over homework, question answer time, et cetera. These are all pedagogical methods that can be successfully employed on Zoom. Additionally, Zoom allows for placing students in breakout rooms, effectively allowing for group work and collaboration that cannot safely be done when masked distance on the Level 2 plan. In a masked distance classroom, we cannot see each other's faces, making it difficult to interpret emotion and nuance in spoken language, creating difficulties in hearing, understanding one another and likely exacerbating our language barriers of EL students. All of these problems are significantly reduced, if not entirely avoided, in distance learning Level 3 as students and teachers are able to see one another's faces and hear each other's voices clearly on Zoom. Conclusion, Level 2 will provide little if any pedagogical advantages over distance learning while creating difficulties and effective communication that are not existent in Level 3. Second, mental health, social, emotional wellbeing. Kids need to see their friends. They must be back at school for their mental wellbeing. Unfortunately, this is often accompanied by an unrealistic view of what in-person instruction will be in Level 2. If kids' teachers are required to be masked and distanced.
That is the end of the two minutes?
Okay, well, let, uh, trustee Yelsey, would you finish that one and then we'll, we'll move on.
Okay, as well, will students' social, emotional wellbeing be served by not being able to close in or to touch, hug their friends, not to see their faces when they talk to each other? How will students and teachers not feel anxious about their potential exposure? How will students feel when there's an available positive test on their site? What is, what is, what if it is one of their, in one of their classes? What if it's them? I am certain that a student who tests positive will feel ashamed, be blamed, ridiculed, blacklisted as many of their classmates and scorned for causing others to need to quarantine. Thank you, John Raisleton.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to comments on item 6B, conference with labor negotiator NMUSD representative.
Wait, was that the whole 20, 30 minutes?
30 minutes of public comments on.
We have 10 minutes left to the 30 minutes.
Thank you. There was just two minutes longer for Mrs. Yelsey's comments.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, my fault, my fault. I apologize. Thank you, Trustee Metoyer, for pointing that out. So we will move on to trustee Anderson.
Yes, my comment is from Jenna Orzano. I'm writing to you regarding the imperative need to reopen our schools. We have two daughters at Anderson Elementary and second in kindergarten. We appreciate all of the hard work and dedication that the administration and staff have put into the distance learning curriculum thus far. However, this format of learning, virtual, is severely detrimental to our children's mental and emotional health. I want to reaffirm my support to reopen our schools as soon as possible. We support both Level 2 and Level 3 plans. Our community is trusting that our elected officials will do the right thing and open schools as soon as possible.
Thank you. Trustee Barto.
My comment is from Brent Chandler. Follow the science and the California guidelines for opening public schools. If the county meets the state requirements, schools should open. If requirements aren't met, waivers should not be considered. The health and safety of our children and our families should always come before politics.
Thank you.
My community member is Jose De La Hara. My daughter attends Davis Magnet and I implore that Newport Mesa Unified School District Board applies for the waiver from Orange County Department of Health. My daughter is struggling to, in remote learning and her self-esteem is very low since she can't see her friends. Please bring the kids back to school.
Great, thank you. I have Karen Wool Smith. I want to write and say that I am so impressed with how well distance learning is going so far. The improvements made over last spring are significant. My kids are happy and engaged from 8:15 AM until almost 3:00 PM. And we use the extra time this afternoon to catch up and review the assignments completed thus far. I know it still is, it's, it has its share of challenges, but we are very pleasantly surprised. I would prefer to continue in this fashion until the end of the semester. I've heard that in-person plans for several other districts and they result in less overall instruction time plus less, less time for kids to be at. plus less time for kids to be actively engaged. In addition, right now, my kids seem to see their teacher's face and vice versa. They can see the faces of their friends. My son does speech, and they can work very well together over Zoom. If we were to switch to in-person, the masks will block that visibility and create communication challenges. Furthermore, our family got sick the weekend before school started. Two of us tested negative for COVID, but we all still had COVID-like symptoms. That means, had we been doing in-person learning, they would have had to miss the first week of school. Fortunately, that wasn't the case, and they were still able to attend via distance learning. I would urge the board to not rush our kids back into school when there is no clear benefit to do so, and what it creates is the potential for more logistical challenges, more missed school, more disruptions, and less overall instructional time. Thank you.
Mine is from Claire Nomdar. Online distance learning is not nearly as effective as in-person instruction. My fourth and sixth graders are already over it, and we are only on day seven. They struggle continually with connectivity issues. They hate looking at a screen all day, are easily distracted, feel overwhelmed with watching and trying to follow their teachers' lessons, and they miss the mentally beneficial social interaction with their teachers and classmates. Newport Mesa needs to listen to the majority of parents. Please send out a district-wide parent survey asking parents one simple question. Do you want us to open schools as soon as possible? Then collect and publicly publish what the parents want. Please get your act together and have all Newport Mesa schools open right when the state allows it. If other schools can start in-person instruction right when given the go-ahead, then why can't we? Where is the lack of leadership and organization coming from? The superintendent's dubious emails convey nothing except continual confusion and further unanswered questions. Set an actual date that we will open if we meet the state guidelines, and please stick with it. As for parents and teachers, they don't feel comfortable going in-person right away. Make it possible for them to switch to 100% online and then come to campuses once they feel ready. Please, Newport Mesa, represent and listen to what we want for our kids, which is learning in-person ASAP.
Thank you.
My comment is from Michelle Stefano. Thank you for proceeding with caution on school reopening. So many parents are grateful. Please do not be rushed by the loud minority of parents who are not looking at the concept as a whole and only focusing on their individual situation. Please take your time and every precaution needed to ensure safety for all students, teachers, and staff. This is a highly complex issue that cannot be rushed due to threats and aggression. In a pandemic, safety first is paramount.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
My comment is from Doug Kohler. Newport Mesa must apply for the waiver. It is unacceptable that the superintendent said it is too hard. Even with a diverse student body, the members of this district demand a waiver be filed.
Thank you. Trustee Bartow.
Yes. Mine is from Alana Maher. Hi, I am an AP student that goes to CDM, and I wanted to address that the hybrid method to reopen our schools is extremely flawed, and these issues need to be addressed. I'd like to start out with a major concern for people who have siblings and the transportation method for students if siblings are required to go to two different times in the day when parents have to go to work. Secondly, I want to address that many students, teachers, and parents are fearing for their safety if you plan on reopening. Reopening this early is increasing the risk for students, teachers, and parents to get COVID or other sicknesses that could appear to be COVID. As a high-risk student, I am not comfortable reopening schools this early. Before you say that I should have gone to the cloud campus route, I could not. I have many AP courses that aren't offered at all on a cloud campus, and that would be detrimental to my chances to get into college.
Thank you.
My community member is Daniella Gordon. Please open our schools. My kids go to East Bluff and are in the fifth and sixth grade. The teachers are doing a wonderful job this year with distance learning, but staring at a screen all day is causing headaches and frustration for both of my children. It is a depressing and isolating environment, and we are desperate to return as soon as possible.
Thank you. I have Cindy Brazda. We are the only nation amongst our peers who are keeping our children from learning. I am a teacher. I am independent. The more research I've done, the more I find that this is a politically motivated move by keeping our children home from school. I want to be in the classroom alveit safely. I want my own children in the classroom, safe as well. Let's find a compromise and return to school.
My comment is from Selena Woodridge. Open up to schools. Our kids need in-person education.
My comment is from Rebecca. I think we should hold off reopening so we avoid going back and forth between online and in-person school. That is might-disruptive and just sticking with online learning for a while. Teachers are doing great with distance learning this year. In-person school will not be like it was before, and I don't think we should rush it.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
My comment is from Kelly and Tim Foley. Newport Mesa Board of Education, please take the below into consideration. Our school district education is failing our kids, and our kids are begging to be back on campus and attending in-class learning. We are writing to all of the Newport Mesa Board of Education trustees to encourage Newport Mesa to prepare now for school reopening. We are asking Newport Mesa to create a plan which includes implementation timelines to perform and install whatever is necessary to bring students back in class on campus no later than five days after meeting the California reopening guidelines. So far this year, distance learning is failing our CDM ninth-grade student. As an example, today, Wednesday, September 2, 2020, our ninth grader had three classes scheduled for distance learning. Of the three classes, he received a total of 30 to 35 minutes of actual online learning with 15 to 20 minutes total of homework. His language arts class was cut to five minutes because the teacher was having issues with her Wi-Fi. His last class consisted of five minutes, as it was an athletics class. Monday was very similar. It would greatly help our students if teachers were required to teach from their classrooms. They would be less likely to have Wi-Fi issues and be better prepared to teach our children with less at-home interruptions. Multiple school districts in Orange County have been proactive and have already communicated their reopening plans, have implemented and installed all items required to have students back in class and have included dates or timeline when students would resume in-class learning. And most have included their sports program plans for resuming training, conditioning, and practices. These school districts include Tustin Unified, Irvine Unified, Capo Unified, Saddleback Valley Unified, LA Unified, and OU SD, with more ready to communicate. We have seen nothing from Newport Mesa addressing reopening...
That is the end of the two minutes?
Go ahead and finish, because I allowed that for the other one.
Okay. We see nothing from Newport Mesa addressing reopening dates or installation of items required to assist students to be back in class and request a plan comparable to Orange County school districts listed above that are planning on reopening. Our kids learned very little the last three months of school, and we already see a repeat happening this year. Teachers have issues and are depending on students and parents to teach our children. Benefits for in-class school and youth sports. Time management skills. It is tough for parents to hold kids to a Monday-through-Friday schedule when every day is similar to a weekend schedule. Most teachers have five-to-30-minute Zoom meetings two days a week for their students, and most households have both parents working full-time. Understanding. Children learn at different rates with different methods. Teachers can tell that in-person and cannot through a screen. Responsibility. Pushing a person to get good grades in order to stay on a team. Self-esteem. Connections grown within a class, team, or a coach that could aid in self-esteem or belongingness. Ability to request help and clarification from teacher in-person at the time a lesson is taught as opposed to several days later via Zoom Q&amp;A meeting. Peer-to-peer interaction. Able to ask peers for assistance kids learn by hands-on. Social skills. Meeting new friends and creating a positive outlook online. Attending classes or performing a sport can add time-management skills and often help avoid other problems kids get into with nothing better to do. Being in shape and building confidence. Physical exercise. Some kids have no form of exercise without PE or sports. Please, our students are begging to be back on campus and in class with their teachers learning. Regards, Tim and Kelly Foley.
Thank you.
Trustee Flor, that's the end of the 30 minutes.
Terrific, thank you. So we will now proceed to the comments on Item 6B, Conference with Labor Negotiators NMUSD Representative. We have two comments on that, so we do not need to go to the two-minute mark.
President Flor, I want to point out that it appears that one of the two comments is not related to 6B. I think the person submitting the item may have put 6B in inadvertent...
Yes, I see that. So that goes to the end. We will move the number from... That is Kimberly Pearson. Her comment is actually in reference to 6A. And we will move to comment 6B, Tamara Fairbanks. Ms. Bartow, Trustee Bartow.
Yes, this comment is from Tamara Fairbanks, Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. Dear School Board Trustees, as you discuss your thoughts about hybrid models and what we should do about reopening, please think about the latest research. The safest models create the least amount of contact between students and staff. The less kids on campus, the less transmission. The latest research has proven that children under the age of 10 transmit the virus the same as adults. You can lessen that contact with masks, social distancing, safety shields, a frequent sanitation plan, and face shields. Making sure that the air ventilation system has frequent checks and filter changes are critical. Making sure that our classrooms with 9A filters have some type of enhanced sanitation is needed. Please remember that the ventilation system is the most critical transmission area for nursing homes in relation to the virus. Please walk through all of our school sites and determine whether the traffic patterns can occur during this model. Please make sure that the schools are sanitized more than once a day. As a federation, we believe that all of our staff and students deserve a place where we can work safely without fear of outbreak. We want to have the opportunity to have an environment that prevents us from the ping-pong effect of Level 3 and Level 2. We want safety first. These considerations should be solved prior to make any decision on a hybrid. This is the information that needs to drive the instruction. This is what is needed to have a safe reopening. Every child, every day, means keeping them safe every day, regardless of whether they are in the building. Let's take the time to equip our buildings with the appropriate full-day safety plan. We love our students. We love our communities. Let's keep them safe.
Thank you.
I have a point of order. I think that this person is accurate. They say they're an educator, and they're talking about staff time. So if it's undermined, if I can read it, I would like to request to read it. It's like three sentences, four sentences.
Which one? From Kimberly Peterson?
Yes. I would prefer to err on the side of the person. Put it in the right column.
Okay, that's fine. Is everybody in agreement? Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you. The comment is from Kimberly Pearson. Dear Board Members, thank you for all that you have done during this pandemic to keep Newport Mesa students and staff safe. As both a parent and an educator, I appreciate the challenging decisions that have been made for all stakeholders. As the state and county navigate through a new set of guidelines, I ask that you continue to proceed with caution when considering the reopening of schools. I urge you to allow staff adequate time to prepare school sites for the safe return of all. Please do not rush back to school only to set back and return to distance learning if numbers arise. Thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you, Ashley. I always trust the board members to read everything, and I also am very appreciative of Superintendent Lee Sung as well as our Board Secretary, Rosie Mesquod, because she has taken the time to read all of them and make sure that they were placed, trying to make sure they were placed in the correct order. There may have been a few mistakes, but we are working really hard to try and make sure that we are allowing for both positive reopening and wanting to delay to make sure that they have equal representation. So that's what we're doing. Superintendent Lee Sung, I believe you'd like to have a statement, and if you have any clarifying answers to some of the questions that were proposed, I'm turning it over to you.
Okay, thank you, President Flor. First of all, I want to thank all the individuals who took time to submit comments for the board and district leadership to consider. I do want to provide some information as much as I can at this point. So first of all, the district is currently assessing whether to pursue the elementary school waiver for reopening. The elementary school waiver process requires support from our employee associations, support from parents district-wide, and has a 14-day waiting period after submission. So based on the potential timing of all Orange County schools being eligible for reopening without a waiver as of September 22, the waiver process would not expedite the process for the reopening of our schools. So the district is also in process of determining a date for reopening of all of our schools to Level 2 Modified In-person Instruction. And we do plan to make an announcement as soon as that decision is made, expected as early as late next week. Meanwhile, our district will continue to prepare for in-person learning for all of our schools and continue to negotiate with our employee associations. And many of the safety protocols and processes that were mentioned in public comments today are the safety protocols that we have in our current reopening plan and that we are diligently working to put in place. And finally, we are pleased that Orange County continues to move in the right direction in terms of the data. And I just want to urge everybody, everyone, to continue to follow the guidance on social distancing, wearing face coverings, avoiding large gatherings, particularly as we approach our long three-day Labor Day weekend. So that's the information I can provide, and we definitely will give information as we decide that and make final determinations. So thank you, President Flor.
Thank you. And so now we will move to closed session. The items are Item 6A, Threat to Public Services or Facilities, and Item 6B, Conference with Labor Negotiator NMUSD Representative. There will be no readout from closed session, and we will not be returning to the public session. So thank you very much for all who attended, and thank you so much for all of your comments, for all those comments. We really do appreciate hearing from you. Many of us have received similar comments from many of you personally, and we are attempting to respond to all of it. So, Mr. Lee Sung, Superintendent Lee Sung, are you sending out a communication tomorrow regarding what you just said at this public session?
Yes, we are preparing a comment, a message, and update to all parents and staff.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, so we will leave and reconvene and move to closed session. So we'll leave this Zoom meeting and move into the next one. Thank you. Have a safe and happy Labor Day weekend.